All right, seven o'clock. I'd like to call the regular council meeting for April the 23rd to order. First order of business is a call for community interest regarding the agenda. And I can say in camera items, there's nothing that interferes with anybody. Is there anything else that I need to say? I mean, none. We'll move on to the agenda. Are there any additions or additions? I'm gonna get a motion to accept the agenda as is.
I'm making motion to accept the agenda as is.
Thanks, John. All in favor? And that is carried. So, adoption of the previous minutes, March the 26th, 2024, the regular minutes, and April the 9th, 2024, the committee of the whole minutes. Are there any errors or omissions in there? I'm asking, I get a motion to accept the, or to adopt the minutes for those two meetings?
I'll make that motion.
Favor? And that is carried. Oh, moving on to the 8.1. Chamber of Commerce delegation. So, the chamber had kind of worked the last night, so they aren't gonna come here, but say, Donna, if you wanna give a kind of update what's going on there?
Um, I can, your worship, thank you. So, the work bee last night entailed the taking down the mural fence. It included the taking down of the fence by the garden fence, which we're given permission for. The giving, taking down the particular part, overarching sign to which the Pelican gave permission for this, so this morning, we're fine with that because that green arch is gonna be used later on in the garden. So, that's what they're discussing at this point. Counselor Ivers' tree will not be moved. It's staying exactly where it is. The fire pit is staying exactly where it is. And the statue of Thor, they've placed it in front there. I have some additional information from my legal counsel who discussed in camera with respect to the Thor statue. But that's what happened at the work bee last night. When I came in to town this morning, I almost called the RCT because I thought the sidewalk had been vandalized with breakings. In all honesty, I wasn't sure what that was. And so, I haven't had a chance, I haven't had a chance to know what that is. But I'm thinking that when posts were cut down on the side, the sidewalks, the paintings were going to be from the work bee thing, danger, something like that. Our CPO got it this morning. He was kind of started investigating the vandalization. So, I'm assuming that's what it was. I don't know. Because there are small pieces of posts sticking up when you saw the, the four posts with the arch above. So, that's, that's so far what it is now. I know they're working on the Thor statue. And like I say, Will, I brought, I brought information quietly over to camera. Cory, that's the...
Yeah, your suspicion is correct. I happened to be driving by last night and was very curious what was going on, just because there was all kinds of bullshit going on. Yes, there was obviously break things on the sidewalk, and I couldn't figure out why. Because as far as my reflection goes, is you're supposed to have a plan, that's something, that before people start demolishing things. So, I'm very confused as to why things are seemingly demolished and things arbitrarily happening when there's been no concrete plan of any description that's been done.
Well, let me... I will keep my comments high level, and I will move them to camera. Oh, with respect to Congress, and that's an answer for you. So, it looks like this plan that's in, in our council packages is the plan, but the picture's able to store statues, and of course, the fire pits. So, that looks like their final plan. That where was very nearly the fence, he also said it can go, for it to go, apparently. So, I have, I have a more robust discussion to have with...
Okay. So, that's wonderful.
This is the plan to, so far. This is the final plan.
Okay.
Okay. Want to have another question, or do you want to? All right. So, like I say, Will, we'll just get a motion to accept the, the reports of information. All right. So, moving on to old business, 8.1, June 2024, proclamations. We've just added a few in there. Donna, we're doing this, four more.
We had, your worship, that we wanted to start some recreation months for sure. We didn't want to miss Pride Month, and that's really now a month. Pride Month is now a month. So, we consider it, like Mother's Day and everything else, but we still claim that theme is weak. We're denied the world elder these days. We're gonna see upcoming proclamations to, as a whole.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments on those proclamations, or anything else? If not, then I get a motion to add those four grades to the proclamations. So, we're all in favor? Uh, 7.2, the National Police Federal Letter of Support. So, we talked about this before, and she has already prepared letters. So...
Yes, I was waiting for some stats, your worship. So, I sent council an email with the letter proposed. There's some new, new information that came out with respect to the sheriff, and with respect to the community. It's actually called the Community Civil Action Team. That's just here for me. But what it is, is to support sheriffs on this, so that people who have acres from the house, or people whose houses are being targeted, they can do more of a civil action with it. A lot of them are taking over houses. So, they just added one more to that. Our letter did indicate, though, that it was nice to have all this funnel. They were only gonna add 20 sheriffs to the RCT across the province for this particular task force. I had the experience with the task force when I worked on the COVID path. That time, there was only two, two people on the task force. And it helped with, besides the premises, because it's a, it's a remedy when people are not criminal with stuff, and counties and that, and it could help here. But it's, the sheriffs have non-criminal powers, but it just helps the RCT deal with it. So, that's part of what they added. And then, our comment is, I believe in the letter, the thing that I proposed for your consideration was, that's fine to put all of this money to all these different projects. The problem is, we're still, our CMT's short. That's the problem. We're still not funding the RCT in small towns and rural areas. We need the RCT. And the, the, and, and I've had this conversation, they're in the county all the time. That's our criticism. It's just what it is. County Pinocchio's saying they're in the county. It is, they're in the county for the most part. So, fortunately, we have a CPO here that's patrolling this audit on times, and that's fine. That's what ship duties are. But it's the whole funding. And so, the letter that is prepared for your draft, certainly let comments on it, or any feedback, or any changes you'd like to see. And if your time is done, I'll be...
Yeah, they started building us $5,000 a year for something they're not delivering. A little insult, I think. It's entirely the difference, and the provincial government's budgeting is outside of the champ.
All right. Can I get a motion to somewhat the draft provided, and get other sense?
I can make a motion.
You? All in favor?
Thank you. Worship, I look like it's probably tomorrow, with the money?
Yeah, ultimately.
On the levy, and then we can send it off to the...
And 7.3, another little municipal thing there. Call for independent elections. We have the whole, talking about that one. It's one. Basically, this one was, people don't want municipal elections to have party status. They want regular people from municipalities to regular things in their community. And so, after the provincial government received the survey, and it said that most folks do not want party status or opportunity, the government went and said, hmm. Well, it was brought back in April, like 2024, from the whole... Let's say, go back here. The council administration submitted, what's in the response dispute service, providing a member's... So, what happened then is, we put our response in, and did other municipalities. And then, it came out that, from Tyler Graham, who is the president of ABNCA, gave us a bunch of key messages we can use with our MLA for a kind of... And bottom line is, the message is built on the letter that AUMA sent to Minister of Municipal Affairs and Premier last week, providing ways to trust and transparency in local elections to increase the political party's ballot. So, during the dialogue with the minister and premier, the recent spring municipal leaders caucus, they confirmed their intention to bring in legislation that pays away for political parties. So, nobody wants it. The majority do not want this kind of thing in municipal elections. The government went, well, what the heck? Let's, let's do it anyway. So, the AUMA, ABNCA wants us to use these kinds of talking points when we're talking to our MLA. And they want us to keep local elections local, and there's a local election's local webpage. And so, they want us to contact our local MLA, which is Shinko, addressing our concerns, creating awareness around the topic with our residents. And we can certainly do some work on our website and talking about that. We can put a word in the paper. Well, we could do a lot more social media posts, too. And considering passing a motion in council to draw attention to your official position on the proposal. So, for that, this council is definitely against. I'd like to party the abolition that we passed, and the abolition of the letters that we've shared as well. So, those are just some suggestions. And that's what the president of AUMA did. And then, I provided some information at the back of this from our municipalities about talking about the party system. It's, I will say, from, from our perspective, it's being in municipalities a long time, administration believes that this is a, a, a party system in municipalities. Doesn't matter where our affiliations are now. We can have an NDP, a liberal, or independent, or Rhino party member. It doesn't matter. The, the key function of a municipal council to do is to work for the municipality. Your boundaries are quite small, and they're quite deliberate. And suddenly, if you have a party system here, depending on the party in power, the problem with it is, is that, let's just say, for example, the NDP getting to power again, like the where, if you have a multi-party here, or you have mostly conservative identified council, you won't get much help from the NDP. It won't work. And so, your municipality's, it's like not having a liberal MLA here, not a thing you should. I'm sorry, municipal MP here, not a thing you should or shouldn't. But it, it affects your rank. It affects a whole lot of things of the party in power. It's not interesting, because you have a conservative council.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, it's not even that. It's about purpose to exerting undue control over municipal governance for no reason other than to exert control. That being said, I'm happy to provide those a motion that I will, I will provide a motion for next meeting if everyone's happy with that. If everyone's opposed to this nonsense, I'm assuming everyone is.
Yep.
You can't tell I'm not a big fan of...
Well, I mean, we, we completed the survey, and I don't know what the percentage was, but it was...
No, it wasn't a survey. It was a push poll.
Yeah.
It was a push poll, where they're actively telling you the answer that you're supposed to give. That's not a survey.
Yeah. But even at the fall, they asked us, and we were totally against it. We voted against it. And she was there, and we even talked to her about it, said we were against it.
I've been doing the same thing. News housing and everything else, too. And they're doing all these public consultation. None of it's for the purpose of consulting. It's for pushing an agenda.
Okay. So, you want to make a motion?
I, I, yeah, I'll, I'll, I can definitely write something up. I've been spending pretty much time on that particular thing, so I can, I can write a motion for...
Okay. All in favor? Yeah, it's just gonna still...
It's not really, yeah, it's not really a motion. I was, I responded to that motion for next, next one, assuming that everyone's on the same page.
Yeah, it comes across about no motion, right? Uh, good again. 68% of voters were opposed to the idea. Now, we know. See, 69% of respondents think the political party's position in municipal governance...
Yeah, I don't think that a 32% or whatever actually has looked into it, because there's no, there's no good benefit. There's no redeeming.
Uh, it's, it's gonna be chaos. If it goes through, it's chaos. All right. Thank you for that. Okay, so we'll do that one for that. And then, so, moving on to new business, 8.1, instructions of documents. And what, you sent it, or is it one of those?
I know, you know, this thing, like, what are you asking? I kept meaning, I just, under the schedule, I, what I think we talked about, other than the T plus, it's not like, why, why do you mean a T plus? I mean, it's just all, like, wherever the last date is. And then, there's a couple that don't have a T plus. And I was confused that the T plus meant something that I wasn't quite understanding.
It's, um, because I've done a, a business talk about it.
Okay, they're saying like, yeah, like, plus 12 years, or whatever makes sense. But then, like, T plus 12 years, why some T plus and some not, as we mentioned?
So, it's like, T would be term, the term of employment or event.
But then, why does some of the T in, so, I guess, then the T is just assumed at that point, if you're not?
So, it's like, the term of employment, or term of employment or event. So, let's say we have a contract that only lasts for a year, but then you need to keep it for another seven years on top of that.
Yes. So, like, so here, so you're talking about here, but like, for the seven years?
Mm-hmm.
Why do you need the T plus seven?
Because it would be like, those two years that it's currently active, plus another one that's...
So, from, you know, from the expiration of, from it no longer being useful, though. It's kind of the assumed start date. So, it's like, because some had the T and some didn't, is what threw me off, like, here, like, it's like this, this is the same thing. It's from whenever the seniority list was generated. It's, it's that, whatever the fact, whatever the last effective date of the thing is, it's seven years. But there's no T plus there still.
Yeah. So, I, I see it as like, in the case of this, this one situation, and having those supporting documents. So, the term of somebody's employment, plus an additional seven years in case you need it for any reason.
Yes.
But if it was just seven years from the time that it happened, and they stayed on, and something happened, and you need them to stop, and that's a seven year?
I suppose, I guess, in my mind, is the, you need their employee files, wrong with their employee here. And so, it's whatever, whatever the document is no longer relevant, it's plus seven years.
Yeah, plus seven years in case you need them for...
So, I guess the T plus was thrown off, because it was applicable in some places. And I, I was like, I was just like, creating confusion in my own head, and maybe I'm overthinking. So, I just...
Sure. I know. Absolutely.
Some of these documents go back from 1999.
No, and I read, and I, like, I, I get the whole, like, if you're in on the dates and everything, everything seems fine. Some having the T plus and some not confuse me like that.
I totally, and I totally understand that. It would have to, and I would absolutely...
I was trying to wrap my head around it, and trying to see if I was just, like, delusional, like, not, like, if I was just, like, not understanding. So, I didn't, I had type of me, I should, like, look at it again, and then I would look at it again.
It's okay. And you can comment anytime, too, and we can get over it. Yeah, because I get it, right? It's confusing for me.
Well, they say, I don't, in my mind, it's, well, whenever the, whenever it's no longer applicable, it's whenever it starts regardless, right?
Yeah. And then, it is on a... So, it's, I'd love to sit down for you. I can, I can explain the reason.
Okay. So, she has only one to go. So, there's 21 documents right now that are ready to go with that.
For your box.
These are the ones.
These are the documents ready to be destroyed that are on your list?
Yeah.
There is, uh... 21 blocks. Yeah. So, they will be destroyed by fire. Unless we can't start a fire, they will be destroyed by shredding. So, I just wanted to make this T plus. Is there a way to simplify that? Like, is, is there a way to simplify? Just your opinion?
Yeah, I just said, I'll put it over it. It'd be fundamentally changing, and I'm, and I'm not sure that would be something...
I guess, in my mind, though, it's not that. It says that there's a, somewhere, just to, like, in the legend, time starts out of the last needed date of the document, so to speak, like...
Or the ending.
And then, they're all from, like, whenever they're no longer useful, the time starts at the...
Yeah. So, like, an employee file that a T plus seven year, seven years.
Seven years from when it's no longer useful.
And then, at the bottom, it can say, time starts...
When it's terminated, or employee manager, or whatever, like, whatever the document is no longer...
The start date of the live document.
It's, like, seems to simplify it to me, but then I thought I was missing something.
So, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around it, too. But I think we could put, like, a note or an app, to, right? We can also do something else with it, too. We could create a small policy that indicates, uh, that indicates something for this as well.
Yeah, like, when it's deemed no longer useful.
That's right.
Why is that? That seemed like it would, like, clarify and simplify to me to the other, as well, why the T versus not the T. And I understood, when I really scrutinized, I stopped and, like, wrapped my head around it. More confusing, rather than more simple?
Right. No, I understand. So, we pass the bottom line. So...
Yeah. There's, yeah, the comments that we passed it with, right?
That's right. So, what I'm suggesting, maybe, is create a, usually with this kind of document, too, you have a policy document as well. So, and the policy document explains a little more. So, maybe let's create a policy document that explains this. That way, it refers to the policy at the bottom of the thing, right?
Definitely. Yeah, employment related things are out of the last days, you know, or whatever, and just...
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, that would actually, you know, to clarify and simplify it.
I have no problem with that, Counselor. I think a small one-page policy, anyway, that we can just clarify.
Yeah, I mean, it's, like, gonna be, like, two lines long, and then, the labyrinth policy, but...
Yeah. Well, anything that we, we question on something, let's just think to clarify because we do a lot of documents.
Well, right now, it's not an issue. It's when it becomes a point of contention, is when everyone starts scrutinizing it, and at that point, it's too late.
Hundred percent. Okay, we can, we can take that direction.
Thank you.
Create a policy to clarify the T plus section.
Yeah, like I say, the dates and stuff, I look fine and understandable and reasonable. I just, yeah, like I say...
You're gonna bring it back to the next one, or is it more...
We'll bring the policy back.
Your worship. But if we could get a, if we could get a motion to destroy these documents, fine, we'll just bring the policy back.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. Cory?
Yeah, I think to approve destruction of documents, that's...
All in favor? Just for, for the gallery, just that you guys know. I'll just give you one example here, like, Alberta Capital Region Governance Review, 1999. We're supposed to keep it for seven years, 2006. So, these records are still sitting there. So, they've been here for 18 years from the year since. So, these are the type of things that we get to do. I'm not trying to hide a bunch of stuff. All right. Thank you for that. 8.2, the Assessment Review Board, new member course. I'll let you talk about that one.
Thank you, your worship. So, we have known members from our municipalities. That's our singularly appointed, that counts for Mayor Austin, and the Regional Assessment Review Board, Circuit of this county. And there's training for that. And so, Joyce Gavin from McCounty phoned, and basically, the Regional Assessment Review Board is intermunicipal, and it's held in this county, the county authority. On behalf of town authorities, we take the Fox Association, which we established, and we just have to have a representative. Each municipality can have seven members trained to be part of the Assessment Review Board, have to undergo training through this county, and you have to be a member of the council or resident, or the member of municipality. So, members that they, community would like to be on the Assessment Review Board, they're certainly welcome. And I actually think that more community members should be on the Assessment Review Board. It certainly gives them a good understanding of what assessment is. When, when they just ask me to pick a board, I chose the SDAB board as their chair, because it's more interesting to me. But there's assessments that might be interesting to a lot of people. So, so they have three appointed members, most municipalities have two, which is fine. Mayor Austin will be training, and as a backup, we require some of the, that's interested in the...
I can't remember how long the, the course lasts, where it needs to be re-verified, but I believe, you know, former Counselor Poffenrod over there is, is probably eager to do it.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, like they had around, on...
Maybe three years, you think you can do it without three?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's shorter, quick, easier, a little bit fresher.
Oh, it's way easier. So, probably we would send Mayor Austin and former Counselor Poffenrod together on the training.
If you want, I don't know.
I don't know.
Nothing like being home told.
You can't, what happens, you show up and...
Just for everybody's information, I've been on board for a few years. Had a couple of calls, that there may be an assessment needed, and then it fell apart. The two sides got together.
Yeah, we just need to know that there's somebody available, that actually does come up.
That's correct. I tell everybody, notice you can't do your own...
No.
...area. And like I say, I have the SDAB training already, so... All right. Can I get a motion for, in effect, to...
I moved to, to appoint Ken Poffenrod to the board, and sent him for pressure training, as well as Mayor Austin for his training.
All in favor?
I would care.
Glad you came along tonight, Ken?
Kind of like the volunteer line, just step back.
Yeah, exactly. Just like being in the army, isn't it? Okay, moving on to 8.3, Thursday Craft and Trade Market. Say, Donna, you just come on.
Um, with, with respect to, your worship, uh, this, I will apply that to her.
Perfect.
Do you have anything?
I can, I can run a, a third and a fourth.
May third and fourth. There's Thursday Craft and Trade Show Market at the community hall. And I had been approached by one of the market vendors, and just saying it would be really appreciated if council and residents would make an appearance and come and support the vendors that are putting on the show in the area. And that they're just quite disappointed at the end of the day, that quite often, there isn't, doesn't seem to be the support from the community. So, they wanted me to invite you, or show you a poster, and hoping that people would be aware, and please come and support me.
Good. I was, I was, it's a Friday night, and then Saturday, and then day. I don't know, we have, like, our little trade show booth around somewhere. I don't know, I had a few hours, and we could go, like, set up a table, and do, like, a group, and just, I don't know, just talk a little stuff. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, yes, you know.
No, we have Friday night or whatever.
The Friday night is the parakeet supper, existing conjunction.
Yeah, they kind of do it hard enough to try to encourage attendance.
So, what, uh, we'll just, we don't count this waiter or anything like that. We do?
Yes.
All right.
Well, and that would be...
For eight by 10.
Yeah, okay. I mean, yeah.
I assume that would be welcome. I, I don't know if you'd have to register.
Well, it should, it's cheap. It's, I can't remember the charge. It's not much for a table. We should just pay the 30 bucks or whatever for a table, just to support it. And I don't know.
Anybody interested in that?
Well, you say, I'll do, I can put to Friday night.
And anybody else?
I can set up on Friday and do the Friday night. Saturday, I'm not...
Okay, promise. And if anybody else wants to join in, they're more than welcome to sit there with you.
Well, yeah, somebody needs to, we should have somebody, right? Nothing looks worse than having no one show up, right? I can try, but I, I don't, check, I can promise for the...
Friday's a possibility. I could join, Cory, but Saturday...
Saturday and night.
I don't know. Going to the, uh, the, oh, you suffer, I know.
Well, I'll be there anyway.
I can be there anyhow. I, I'm sure I can find some things to talk about. And that's some exciting things that we're talking about tonight. So, let me make some of that in there. Yeah, Andrew? All right, what?
Eight, those again? Eight, those, what? The call, Friday.
You'll say that, Cory, do you, do you mind that, tell them that we're gonna do this?
Yeah, I don't know where it is currently, right now. But I have said it before, it's not, we are... Yeah, so we can find where it exists. I can, is it somewhere here?
I use it here.
I assume it just tucked away somewhere, yeah.
Okay. Want to make a motion to that? You have a motion to that, or anything, or?
Um, a motion to attend, your worship.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to attend and participate in the... Yeah, I'd make a motion to attend and participate in the, uh, the hold of the Community Hall Craft Market.
All in favor?
But Saturday, if nobody's able to.
Well, I don't always pretty much, I mean, I'm gonna try. If nobody else can, I'll have to try to see what I can do. I just.
I, I think I might be.
They would love it if you could stop on shop at minimum.
I'll send you the poster reading.
I think it's only a long day. I think it's only eleven to five or something, maybe.
Raise the motion.
That's good for PR.
And then just to add to that, um, I had spoke, because I had bought tickets for the Proke. Yeah, so it's Thursday Craft and Trades, very spring market, Friday, May third, five to nine. Saturday, May fourth, eleven to four, Thursday Community Center. So that is when the trade show is. But I'm talking about the May long weekend because, um, I think my son and I are gonna do the cornhole tournament. So I was told to suggest to other people on council and staff to participate if they could in the cornhole tournament on the Saturday of the May long weekend.
The only, the only issue with that matter, and you can probably get around it, is that we're having our cake cutting at one thirty.
Well, it's gonna be there, right? So. I'll just get Kate Canning to the conference. Or is it at the hall? Or at the gym?
Kate Canning is gonna be following the parade over at the complex area and then tournament is over.
It's over there. Okay.
The ceremony is gonna be at one thirty and, uh, so. It'd be hard to be at two places at once, but. Andrew, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I'll double check my schedule. If council will pay with it, I, I might be able to do it.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, even if there's like, yeah, people.
Yeah, I'm sure we can. That's why somebody get in there.
I'm just gonna double check to see if I have my kids up. If I don't have my kids on, I'll probably volunteer, Mike.
Okay.
Yeah. There'll be crafts everywhere.
All right. All right, thank you for that. All right, uh, nine point one, uh, Bylaws and Policies, uh, nine point one fees and service by law twenty twenty-four, thirty one. Your Honor, you wanna?
Yes, Your Worship, thank you. We do have one small amendment that just came up, and I'll leave that to the people, city to, uh, talk about that. Otherwise, this is second and third reading. I can't look confused to pass the vote with the municipal city's proposal. The new fee proposal, additional.
I'd like to add a, um, tax notification filing fee. So when people are in arrears and they don't, um, pay, I have to send out letters to all of them. Then if they still don't pay by a certain date, I have to register it with land titles and state charges and it takes time. So I'm just proposing a tax notification filing fee of two hundred dollars when I have to do that. Because then when they do pay, then again, I have to go on and discharge the, the notification. So it's all time and other municipalities do it. How much does it go ahead?
So I just wanna have that because it's, I guess. And it costs us money, like with letter mailing and registering them on land title. So just adding that as a new item under schedule.
Yeah.
Correct.
Uh, all right. So do you wanna just, we gotta pass it with that change kind of thing, Don?
We can, if council will need it, we can put that second or third.
The discussion on? Okay, all right then. So we'll start with the, uh, second reading, or the second reading of the bylaw twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I'm second reading of bylaw twenty twenty-four is your vote.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie, and then got your motion for the third and final reading? All in favor? That is carried. All right, so then the.
I move with the, uh, first reading of bylaw twenty twenty-four, zero five, repeal twenty twenty-two.
Right, thank you. All in favor of that one? That is carried. And, um, you have to repeal, yeah.
I'm second reading of bylaw twenty twenty-four, five.
Thank you. All in favor? That was carried. Adam?
I move to allow for you to, and to allow a third reading of bylaw twenty twenty-four, five.
Thank you. All in favor?
I want to go last one there.
Somebody, Corey?
I'll move, uh, third reading of bylaw twenty twenty-four, five to the, the bylaw two, zero, two, five.
Thank you. All in favor? Those are all carried. Done.
Yeah, okay, wow. Norman, you're going in circle. You guys are throwing me off.
All right, so, um, okay, that's it for the bylaws and, uh, so we'll move on to, uh, administration, eleven point one, Veritas Report.
I, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ken.
I'm just wondering, uh, a lot of us back here don't have value through.
Okay.
So we don't need you to rate, read the whole thing, but you can just, if you're a thumbnail on.
Absolutely.
When you get approved.
Absolutely.
I love.
So fees and services, we made some changes to it for the administration, some fees and stuff in there, okay? So we, uh, we, we brought it, uh, first reading before, so we've done finals here. And then when you do that, you have to repeal the old one. And that's what we get.
Oh, was it? No, the rest.
As you know, it's just, they're not this thing and you've gotta go with first thing you know.
I'll just bring that up.
Okay. All right, moving on to eleven point one, the Veritas Report.
Um, our experience report was today at about seventeen percent of expenses up to three months. Yeah, but right now we have a short call of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, but again, no revenue yet, too much, no revenue.
And, uh, just, just, I know you haven't got it on here, but how are we making out with our operating?
Oh, wait, is it? Well, there's, yeah, there's, oh, yeah, there's so many in there. There's so many there, but, um, check around there.
But we haven't had to go into.
No, still not into the.
It's our overdraft.
The overdraft.
Which is, which is, uh.
Yeah, but the insurance bill is a hundred and twenty something thousand.
Yeah, we've been amazing.
Maybe two months before we hit.
Over that.
I don't know.
Not with the, the insurance bill. It's making me nervous.
The way interest rates are, we'd be better off to pay a late payment on the, uh.
Well, they don't really charge us before.
That's what I'm saying.
Cause we're already. I know.
So, I don't know. Make it an extra twenty days.
I know, right? Like another month before we send out. I'll take a look.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
Has an insurance, so we visited to see what we took over the next.
Oh, we look at it every year.
I look at it every year and go through with the findings. Uh, this year they had, uh, proceeded two items. So the thing we go through, they missed some items. And of course, last year we found that we were paying adequately for years, but don't know what it was. Anyway, we cleaned it up. We had to clean it up again this year, put in another amendment to it. Double the correct for our, um, on there. It, it takes about seven days for me to.
Well, that's why I suggested we visit it at least annually.
Oh, yeah, no, we have to look at it every, we have to look at it every year. And it actually did come in under budget. Today I was putting the actual numbers in and it's in the budget and it's brought.
I think they send us the schedules. It's part of what we have.
All right, any other questions? I'm getting a motion to accept the Veritas Report. All in favor? That's carried. So, uh, where are you going to have a public, any, anything from the public that's back there? Any comments or anything anybody wanna bring up? Irene?
Yeah, I talked about this, like, today or not, but, uh, we shouldn't be spread on the committee. Now, I've been thinking for years. And prior to that time, I believe there was, um, a welcome button for the public of the town. Yeah, the head county area, and I think that's why I've been here. And it's both like, uh, to get residents to communicate with each other. Um, it has a welcome button for new people coming into town. And for new babies born in town, they're supposed to sing. Was that organized by the town of, or who would be?
I think Corey's got an answer here for you right now.
Uh, it definitely has been done since you've been in town, cause I didn't do new babies, but I personally used to do it for new residents when I was the chamber president, cause it's a chamber of commerce function. Yeah, we used to do new businesses, new residents. I don't know what the chamber currently does, but it is a chamber of commerce function and that is who always certainly has dealt with it as a chamber of commerce. Uh, and like I say, I, I know I personally did it many times. So it has definitely been done while you've been in town. Richard?
I'm not aware of chamber doing it recently, but I believe the health unit used to offer baby bags. And the last I heard, the health unit hasn't been doing that baby bag, but the library has picked up on doing, uh, baby bags. So any new parents that come into the library, uh, they are offered a, a bag of information and just a place attending to the library.
Yeah, I just have two, two questions that they need to clear up, and I know you brushed across one. My question was, uh, what's planned for Taylor Park? I see some action going on there, but, uh, I don't know whether anybody told the.
Yeah, well, I know there was a, there was in the target last week, they had, uh, they had a whole page on it there. And we're gonna discuss some of it here in, uh, in camera here, uh, after this meeting here. And, uh, I don't know if there's anything else you wanna add to that, Seadoona?
Well, the, in, inside the council section, the chamber brought, uh, Taylor Park proposal. I can give you a copy. Um, with, uh, you can see this, uh, private street state thing, where it is, the people's state is saying it's taken out last night, it's taken out the mural. That wall's gone. How they're gonna put a perennial garden on the side. So I can give you a couple of picking tables and a higher pit will say where it is. The sky model will say where it is. I'm Mr. Taylor's, uh, green arches, um, are going to go in the perennial garden. And we've got a granite rock that, we traded you rock.
Right.
This is the year. We've got a granite rock that, uh, is in the public works shop right now for the Sunday. You're welcome. So the chamber has, Ken, uh, an emergent understanding, uh, that, um, that, uh, they can look after the park. They can, they're supposed to bring new things to the park, the CEO and or council, depending on what they're gonna do, approve, which give their job function. Um, and, uh, so, uh, that's kinda, that's kinda my.
Did you found that any budget in that or is it all?
So budget and power.
The community power there you go.
Uh, my second question, this will kill you, is where's our electronic sign? I threw it in the garbage. Uh, what has happened is coming.
Coming.
Four years. What has happened, of course, because it's in its new location, we had all the permits ready. It was supposed to have been put up last fall. What happened last fall was, when they did the call before you did, everybody came to tell us. And they couldn't do anything without telling us through the line. They phoned us, phoned us, called us, not responsible. Uh, finally, the eleventh hour, they had to, uh, the, the sign company, right? Had to hire another company to come and do it, uh, and just get it, tell us. Which is, which is three months later to tell us how they respond. So when they finally got the, uh, the private company out to do the line, the permit was expired. So it's a new permit, same permit. Now this changed. It's a, it's a reorder of the same permit that's put there. It's giving the transportation, uh, permit, um, queue, and this was their whole process of reviewing it, that's all done with the signs and everything. I just watched it and we, we, that are approved. So they do, lunch, it'll be out here, it's still in control. Oh, we expect to need a bill, all that, I mean, it all been paid for, including the erection. All of what the power is, it's a big one. There's a right to the power. So, uh, your basic figures and I, I've got a call in the fort to see if we can find out if you have to have a transfer or something, I don't know. I seriously think it's in the, uh, the power. So that will, that's our bill. Oh, but I'm trying to dunk it up on the moment.
Do you think I'll get some revenues on that?
Um, I don't know, uh, because it's, uh, folks on the sign, they have to put this book number or emails on. So they could say like this restaurant could, or this public could say, hey, you know, uh, happy hours for five to seven tonight, come on down and I'm serving lasagna. So.
But that does, will draw some.
Oh, yeah.
Go into the.
For sure.
Should draw some commerce in.
Yeah.
Whether it's that or the West Ryan guys or whether it's, uh, one of the real estate guys.
Yeah.
God knows what.
Yeah, yeah. So it's more about, it was built for community science, meeting for. So, um, I don't have a problem, to be quite honest, if the council had a, a traction to that effect. I don't have a problem with that. That's really amazing. You know, we're offering, and it's not to the homeless, but it's to the. On a very, you know, you know, you could say the new grocery store, the other, the foodie, and whatever. So I guess the grocery store is about.
Would you be able to see the sign from the highway?
I know, and the sign is, uh, on seven seventy-eight, you'll see it from inside. You couldn't have seen it really well, whether it's that or this. That's a whole new permit, a whole different permit, so, um, and you had to have a whole LED permit for it because there's a certain bit of illumination. And put it on a highway, et cetera, et cetera. So this way we're a little more, a little less formal. Uh, we still have to watch our movements and watch, uh, all those kinds of colors. And so what will happen is just we'll be going on a course on design and, and everything and movement culture and all those fun things we should have been able to learn. And, uh, she'll be putting everything on the sign, so, uh, it's, the, the.
Actually, we should see it this summer.
Uh, if it's not here this summer, take me out and just bury me in a.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, no problem. I just, I, when I saw you come in, uh, on the council.
Jeff, do it from the computer.
I'll leave it at that, okay? Anything else, Doctor?
Can I ask next meeting?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask next meeting?
Yeah.
Where's the, where's the sign? He's going every meeting.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Shelley?
Question, um, just for my own information, are we still doing the special meeting in regard to taxes? Just to meet them. Yeah, okay. At five? Okay, good.
Nothing else than, uh?
You know, Darryl?
Yep.
People all complain about the town doesn't support the businesses or the community. It never has. I know that for a fact.
Everybody.
I bought all my groceries in town here while my kids were growing up. I went and parked in I J Park in Lottona Dooce. Guess who I seen? All the businessmen's wives shopping in there, not supporting the logo.
Things have changed, you know, I mean, people never used to make trips out of town, you know, and, but now it's nothing to go to Edmonton or.
No, this was thirty-five years ago.
Yeah, exactly.
And they were doing that.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if you've heard, I've heard a rumor that the grocery store in town is sold.
What?
Yeah, it is. As far as I know, it's true.
They're gonna have new owners there, so. That goes.
Wow.
But yeah, you're, you're right, and people, people, what can you do about it?
Well, yeah, when you don't, when you see your own business, people not supporting the town, why should you? So, no, I don't support the town. Only one I support is Darryl.
I can assure you, this mayor's town, where he supports the town.
Hi, Sean.
He'll be there Saturday.
I went to the grocery store today and the new owner was there, so. Already transferred? He's learning.
Oh.
Can I get a motion to take a ten minute recess and then we'll come back in ten minutes? All in favor? All in favor? And just for the camera, I, I, like, we've got some big items in camera, I don't know, we might make some motions after this. People are all hanging around, but I don't know how long it's gonna take. It's open. I guess we'll listen for it tomorrow. That's right, that's right. Thanks for that, Your Worship. There's nothing else I can say to them.